On those specific things, if we don't have one other person, you can listen to them. They can present, but you will not be able to vote because you don't have a quorum. Till next time, because there won't be a quorum.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but that'll be until seven.
Is quorum five numbers?
Quorum is four, quorum is four. So if we end up, hopefully that Blake, Blake will hop on if he's on Zoom, he's fine. The other two had emergencies, so that happens at times. So because I'm assuming we've already, has the ordinance already been recorded?
Yeah, it was effective on the eleven.
Okay, okay, well, we'll just, we'll just wait and see, but you go ahead and start discussing the things with work. And like I say, the training, we have two people coming from the state to do the training. And then we'll see, hopefully by seven, if not, we'll still have them do their presentation. You just won't be able to vote, which is unfortunate for their residents, but that is what it is.
Yeah.
So, hey.
Are you staring?
Yes.
Okay, so we can begin our work meeting, I guess. As far as agenda items, did you guys have any comments or questions on what was presented?
Well, my question, and maybe Morgan has some input on this, was so these, so for example, in, in the seven o'clock meeting, we've got the permit request, we've got a couple of other things, but is this the appropriate venue to have any discussion on those? Or do we wanna, do we discuss them up there?
If you've got questions about it, you can discuss it here.
Yeah.
And then up there, we can discuss, you know, voting or motions that will be made during the work meeting.
Yeah, sure, okay, okay. So do we wanna talk about the, the one, I mean, this is the one where the building's already built, we've got a restroom and a, and a little office.
Yep.
I'd love, Blake had some comments on that in email. Be nice to hear from him, but.
Yeah, I think this deals with mainly the zoning and what was requested. And if it's, it's an agriculture building, more choice was approved, so I don't know.
But, but can't you have a restroom and an office in an agriculture building? I would think so.
I think there has been, according to the code, it says for animals and use of storage, so we just gotta define that. If that's something we wanna allow a conditional use in agriculture building to do that with. So that, that's kind of the main question, so get comment from Tyler on what the purposes.
Okay, so my question on the, on the permit, it says, will plumbing be installed? And he says, no.
So that was from the original.
The original one, okay. And so then on the, on the diagram, I had a hard time understanding. So this is all?
That's the whole building there.
And, and it's, and it's, it's already up?
Yes.
And is that, which one is that? Is that this one?
I think it's this.
It's this one.
Okay.
And so he's asking to, is it already divided? I didn't, I didn't understand.
I understand is that, I don't know about this wall, but this section here is the piece that he wants to add in.
Yeah, so we could ask him questions on what was actually going on. And I think staff has comments on it in their presentation, they can give on what was requested, what was approved last time, what went out and got inspected.
I'm Brandon.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Brandon Wall.
I was online the other.
Good to meet you.
Month.
Awesome.
Never met you guys.
I'm bringing Brandon, nice to meet you.
Yeah.
It's nice to weather today.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, so when it says, and maybe this was from the old list, I didn't understand. The existing structure is eighteen, the pit, the size of this pit is twelve ninety-seven, has the pit been covered? Is that?
So I think if you look at that diagram.
This one?
That's the pit portion.
This part, this?
One, one of the others, yeah, whatever.
And the roof's already on it, that was happening prior, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Do you have the, can you pull up the code? I mean, does the, if it's agricultural, does it really say that we can't put a restroom and another room in there?
It's, it's kind of vague.
I mean, my, my thought on it is, I mean, apparently the city and everything knows that he's doing a business out of there. And he's even commented, I think, that he wants to expand a little bit. So just from an environmental standpoint, if, if you don't allow him to put the restroom in there, they're gonna go outside the building and do their business anyway, you know what I mean? Now, if the code specifically says, no, you can't do that, then that's one thing, but.
Well, as far as I know, he's being a conditional user, so he'll be able to do it, so.
Right.
So I'm guessing that the code just said a conditional use.
Yeah.
He'll do whatever he wants.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I guess the question is, is he, if he's operating a business out of there, it's in R one section, is that an allowed, an allowed use? Would be, would need to discuss and wanna approve that allowed use or?
Well, is that being requested?
Well, it's an interesting point, but it's slightly different than what he's coming in for. Like, so if he's coming in for, look, I just want to add bathroom office space, can you make a issues permit? You would determine it based on that. Now, if he starts operating a business, city hears that and he's allowed to, a different issue.
Yeah.
Go out there, cite him for, you know, operating.
So this is just the issue of a bathroom.
That's good.
Yeah, and that's how commonly comes up where you, you maybe suspect something or think something up, but you have to kind of just take it as the issue that's in front of you.
Yeah.
Okay, let's analyze this bathroom and office space. And on a conditional use, typically what you're looking at is, okay, what's the possible adverse effect of this request?
Right.
Can we alleviate it if there is one with some kind of condition? Sometimes there aren't any, so there's actually not a whole lot of discussion.
And the, the interesting part here is they do own the piece behind them, which is five acres, which would be considered agriculture, and so budding pieces, state code says, should be considered the same. So it's kind of a tricky situation.
Yeah.
So the question?
The question today is just if we want it to be the allowed bathroom.
But he is operating a business, that's what the original one says, agriculture business, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So we may not have the opportunity to vote on that today because of.
You gotta.
Yeah, exactly, so it may be, we may have to push it off, but.
Yes, you can do this work, we can do the training or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't get four, you can get me.
Yes, yeah. But I mean, so is, is this, because we're new, tell me, is this where we, we obviously can discuss this and voice our opinion? But for me, on this issue, um, he's, we already know that he's doing a business. That seems to be okay. And I, I'm in favor of, I think it would be better to have a restroom there than to do otherwise. So in my opinion, I would approve that, but.
Yeah, yeah, so did your question, you had to work when you just talked about it.
Yeah.
Kind of talk about what you like, don't like.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, you know, I'm gonna be voting on it.
Yeah, sure, okay. And then we could, we can listen to him though.
You may have questions for him.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and it's a, um, not a public hearing, so yeah, go talk, you have questions for him, whatever you wanna ask him.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
And then on the second one, the H L Parker Legacy Subdivision Developer Agreement Extension.
He just wants to extend?
And then she's, these are extended twice, so we're gonna have to reapprove that same developer agreement with some conditions.
Yes, he's come in a couple of times, and I think there's some weather-related issues or something like that, so.
I just gathered information from him, so he wants, you know, stop by some.
Would you see a problem extending that?
No, no, typically, as long as it's reasonable.
Yeah.
You know, we, we do quite frequently extend them out, 'cause things come up, can't get finished.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So when is the original, if you look at, I don't know, what's in or five pages, under, says developers agreement, it, it was dated March of nineteen, is that how long this has been going on?
It's been kicking around a minute.
So, so what's, what's the issue? Does, does anybody know? I drove down there and looked, and then.
So it just hasn't met all the specs in the developer agreement? With some of the paving, road base, things that he needs, still needs to do in that agreement to be able to record the lots. And so it's just giving him the time to, to do that.
Is it, is, is, are the lots ready to be sold, other than the pavement? Do you know?
I don't know, we'd ask.
I don't know.
Okay.
We'd have to ask him.
So it looks like the sewer and, and what, I mean, stubbed in, looks to me like it's all stubbed in, curb and gutters in.
They did have some issues with the piping, the strong drain, things like that. So there's been some issues that it's had to work through, and this has caused the extension, so.
So would you ever say, well, let's just close it out and restart it when you're ready? Or is it equally as fine just to keep extending?
I, for me, and I'm not voting, but for me, I think better resides into reasonable reason and a reasonable timeline. I was talking about, you could understand. Um, if it wasn't reasonable or whatever, I guess it's different story that it wasn't easier to do than, you know, start. 'Cause then you get tied up in the issues that are maybe more deep than you need to, like, does he have certain rights related to it versus that? So as long as it's reasonable, we, that would be more consistent with what we've done in the past. He's been pretty versatile with people, as long as they have reasons for it.
Probably best interest of the city is, I mean, it's currently just sitting vacant, ice work.
Right, you want it developed, 'cause you already approved, you wanted to get it done.
That's already approved, so.
Yeah.
So I continue on with his issues, like questions for him, what he has left to do to get that agreement. I don't have any other questions on that. And then the allowed uses in residential zones. Maybe the last, one of the last items, as I reviewed all of them. It's hard to have a crystal ball, knowing what somebody's gonna come in and ask to do in a residential zone to, to make the changes, I don't, I don't, it feels like we'd just be shooting in the wind. The only thing that I, as I reviewed them, I felt like there was some areas that we might be able to consolidate, make things clearer a little bit. I feel like that's on a city council level to kind of propose those changes and.
Yeah. I didn't see anything stood out. On the next one, I've got some thoughts on it.
So I think our current, I mean, what is currently there? It's hard to know what people are gonna ask, and we've had the.
Is, is there a?
Treatment facility that they've been dealing with, not doing in the future.
And couldn't we address those on a case-by-case basis as they come up?
On the allowed uses, I think it was just kind of, every once in a while, I think it's like, where you look through it and just say, okay, does it make sense that this isn't allowed use versus a conditional use?
Yeah.
Or, or is this one that's been a conditional use? Does it really need to be a conditional use?
Yeah.
Change that, or are there other items that should be prohibited in residential? I think it's more about that, just to get in front of it, 'cause times change, and sometimes you see something, you're like, okay, well, that has been permitted use, maybe we wanna flip that to a conditional before that issue comes in.
Yeah.
But I think it's more tied up into that, 'cause if it's, if it's allowed or permitted use, and they come in and ask for it, that's that, you can't really do anything about it, versus if it's a conditional, you at least have some review of it, like you're doing with this one. And then, um, versus, you know, prohibited use, maybe, I guess. So I think that's more of those type of things.
That's right.
Just to get a time to kind of review it again and see if your thoughts are, you know, make changes to it, maybe it's fine, you know?
Got it.
But that was my understanding of what it was, is more just to review it and see if there are things that you guys as a planning commission wanna recommend changes on as far as uses in residential.
Yeah.
Every once in a while, you'll have an app come in, you know, with some kind of use they're proposing, and everybody's like, wait, what? Go through it, there it is, is a conditional, or there it is, is a permitted use.
Yeah.
So, I think that's, but you are correct, you can't always anticipate it. I guess it's just an attempt to try to.
Yeah, keep it as clean as it can be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I reviewed it with Plain City, West Haven, and it seems like we're.
In line.
Pretty similar on all.
Yeah.
Use cases that we have currently. So I didn't see anything that was glaring that said.
Yeah.
It needs to be immediate attention, if I was just.
And does there be anything coming to the city that say, that's, that, wow, this has caught us off guard? We should have had, we should change this, or?
We might be recently, it was maybe with group home stuff, but that's kind of a different level on whether they can do that or not, 'cause it's tied up in the, you know, some of the other federal rules that govern those kind of facilities. But I can't remember anything other than that that's come in and caught us off guard, so.
And that one would have to, have the general plan be modified anyway, right?
That's conditional, so.
Yeah, it's a conditional use.
Oh, okay, okay.
Those are a little bit more complicated questions, those types of facilities.
Yeah.
Just 'cause there, there are some federal laws that govern where those things can go, and.
Yeah.
A little bit different question on that, but to the point of have there been things, I can't remember one where in recent memory where someone's come in and said, you wanna do this? And everybody's in shock, that, wow, didn't anticipate that.
Go to the next one.
Yeah.
So currently, the fees are, I won't go through all of them, but hundred and twenty-five bucks. Well, all of them have a.
Notice.
The first notice, no fine, and then the second is a, a fee and so forth and so forth. I, I think I asked the question early on, but I'd love to know, is, is this a real problem? Or how big of a problem is it? And Morgan, maybe you have somewhere to find that out, but, um, to me, the, and then one of the proposals is, you know, first warning, no, no warning, first time, and that's a fee of upwards of three hundred, three hundred and fifty dollars, et cetera. I just, I don't know. If, if the problem is, are we trying to curtail a, a big problem that we have? Or is this meant to be a revenue generator or whatever? To me, the, the tie out to go to the citizen and not have us be a stick to beat them, beat them with? So I'm in favor, and I would, if, when, when the time comes, I would mention to leave it the way it is.
We go.
Yeah, so that's just.
For me, could I do the, um, I do the prosecuting up at the justice court too, saw the misdemeanors and stuff? So, um, I think to your point, I think it was on here for review for two reasons. One was, similar to the other one, it, it's been a long time since, since it's been reviewed. And so maybe the, the various fines and fees are just out of whack compared to what they should be.
Yeah.
Um, maybe related to other cities, whatever, not that we have to do what they do, but.
Right.
So I think it was partially that, hasn't been reviewed in a long time, so let's go through it. And then the other thing is, I, it's not, not a revenue generating thing, but I think it was more like, okay, are they enough to where we get people's attention, so they can like fix the problem versus not? I think it was more, more tied up into that, 'cause the city's not gonna make any kind of revenue really out of this, even if you put it at three hundred bucks.
Right, right.
There's not that many people out blatantly violating this stuff.
Right, right.
But I think it was tied up into both of those things.
There's not, you say there isn't that many people violating, is that what?
Well, there may be people violating, there's not that many that I see getting cited and they won't fix it right away. Like, so a lot of times I'll get that warning, and then they'll go and fix the problem.
So, so my question, one of the questions I had was like, let's say, um, I apply for a conditional use permit, I say I'm not putting plumbing in or elec- electrical, and then I do. How, is, does some, I assume when the inspector comes, does, do they note that? And if, if you don't follow what you put in, is that when the fine come, when does the fine actually come in?
Yeah, so this depends on what it is, but yeah, I think they'll catch you, like, say you violate the, the building permit that you pulled. You know, that's, we try to, right? If we catch that, red flag, it stops the bill until it gets fixed. And it's, it's always been kind of within discretion a little bit on whether we're more interested in fixing that problem or else coming in to ask for a permit, to come into compliance, versus trying to make money off the person.
Yeah.
So it, it's never been ever Einstein, it's been geared towards trying to get money out of the person, more related to, hey, you, this was the plan you pulled, you're not doing it, so what are we gonna do now? Either you're gonna take that out, or you're gonna come in with an amended plan with your example. I mean, so sometimes you see this stuff with, every once in a while, like nuisance property stuff, where they've got a bunch of stuff on there. You know, hopefully if you warn them enough, they just clear it up themselves, but.
Yeah.
Then the, on the, to, 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 uh, dig into the asphalt or whatever to, that, the, the per, per square foot or linear foot, is that the permit fee? Or is that the actual fee to replace what they're doing, or does, does the city do that? Or how, how does that happen?
Good question, I don't know the answer to that one.
Do you?
That'd be more for public works.
And then my, so my question would be, does that, with, with what asphalt has won, is that even covering the cost? If that's the cost of?
Yeah, and that's a good question, that'd be something to pray to find out more information, 'cause maybe it's out of whack if it's not.
I mean, if you're going into the road to hook up to a sewer or storm drain or whatever, you're obviously gonna brunt the cost of that.
But when I, when I did it, the city, the city fixed it. I didn't.
But, but with your fee though, your permit, that, was that included in?
I don't remember, I, I don't know, that's why I was wondering, is it, seems, seems really low to me.
Yes, I don't know the answer, that'd be something maybe for maybe Malcolm or Jared to get back to you, I don't know. They could probably answer that.
Yeah, maybe if those are per square foot prices, even up to the cost. I mean, we have to, like, it seems, well, just, but there's no reason the city should be brunting that effect.
Correct.
Might as well adjust those. I'm kind of aligned with you, Steve, on the fees. I, I'm good with the no, the notice. I'm okay with adding bite to it if that's what the city on the, but I don't think we should just go to no notice. You're gonna find it right away. I just don't think people understand it quite as well. But if we need to up them to make sure they fix what they're doing, or makes, make the city feel like they have the team to get them to do it, then if they need to readjust those, I'm fine.
Well, I think that the, the notion there is, is do we have a, do we have a big problem? If so, then yeah, let's fix things. If it's not that big of a problem, then again, I, I think the city ought to be helping people with their problems, not be can, you know, be in standard way, if they don't need to be, so.
From, and from my spot, I don't, to the point where it either gets to me to try to go after them in the justice court or getting followed by writing letters, I don't see a ton of the stuff like that. So I, my guess is for the most part, it's getting taken care of at the, at the staff level. Getting their warning, you know, getting their warning, and they go fix it, um, stuff like that.
And again, what this is, this is rural, you know, not, not that we, anyway, I, I'm a fan of, of farm country, and that's why a lot of people moved out here, so they don't have to be totally.
Can't lose the problem.
Yeah.
Bless his mark.
Anyway. Okay.
Um, well, do we go up there for the training, or were they gonna present, were they gonna present on the?
I'm not sure, I think they just walked in, so I can ask.
Well, I think we're at.
I guess, I don't know. Dear shots.
Okay.
I saw her from the lady. I'll keep you guys updated.
He's probably in a giant storm. I don't know if it went that far north, he was in, he was going to, what did he say he was going? He told me Yellowstone or something, or something.
I'm a part of that. Bryce, well, I guess it. And did you say your trip to the Hawaii got canceled?
It did.
Well, that's a bummer.
It is, my, my son-in-law had a stroke, so.
Oh, that's right. How did that?
I think you got, are you guys, are you in the same ward or something?
Yeah, he, he was always on my basketball.
Yeah.
Carson, is it Carson or Blake?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, 'cause didn't they come, when was it, the other night? I didn't make it, but my mom, my mom, my wife went and she.
So do you want to go up there for the training? Do you wanna stay here?
Wherever they want us.
Maybe if you go up there, then he could be here at the podium, and then they can.
He's still in the hospital, so. He's only, only, you know, he's only forty-seven.
Yeah, I follow the Facebook, I'm so glad she just posted stuff.
Jamie is, Jamie is very optimistic. I'm optimistically realistic. And I, it's great to be optimistic and positive, but I was, I've been up there every day, I was up there today, and. He's, he's come a long ways, but he's got.
Okay, so let me say, what we do, is just turn your mic on and off. He's saying this, you know, white congress, maybe they have, or really expensive stuff. He's allowing brand new mics, that's a new mic, we have a whole new. I'm not a fire or whatever, everything's new. Brandon, they were just saying, we turn our mic on, off, they're telling, when they use them.
Oh, like a passover? Oh, really?
So, I mean, they work good, I mean, they studied, and he said, hey, it's white congress, just turn it on and off.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity to be here, um, beautiful weather, right?
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing like winter in Utah, in my opinion. Um, I, I've told a lot of my friends from out of state that Utah's this beautiful place where you have to have a change of clothes for any, like, one of the four seasons at any given time all throughout the year, right? And one, one of the things I love about it. Uh, well, thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight, my name is Rob Terry. I serve as the statewide land use training director housed out of the Office of the Property Rights Ombudsman. Um, is anybody familiar with the property rights ombudsman, have you heard of them before, what they do, how it works? Okay, just a little bit of rundown on what the Office of the Property Rights Ombudsman is. I will start off by saying I'm the only non-attorney in the office, which is typically celebrated, even though the attorneys that are all in that office are, are phenomenal human beings. Um, but the, the Office of the Property Rights is, is very interesting and it's very unique to the state of Utah. So, while there are ombudsmen's for other types of content, usually has to do with elder care, medical, um, things of that nature in other areas of the US, Utah is the only state that has a property rights ombudsman. And that's because, um, Utah's a very strong private property rights state, right? And they wanted to ensure that especially as the state is growing, that whenever there is the public interest that butts up against the, the private property rights, that, that private property owners had someone that was independent and neutral that they could go to and make sure that they understood the laws, the regulations, what their rights were, and also to deal with the government agency as well and make sure that they were doing their part to, to ensure that the private property rights were being respected and everybody was being treated fairly and appropriately. So, neutral, independent, um, office, even though we are housed out of the, um, Department of Commerce, you have, you put somewhere, of course, if you're, if you're a state agency, but we are neutral and independent. Uh, and there's four items that the, that the office focuses on. First is information and education, and that's to ensure that everybody, local agencies, um, you know, non-government organizations, private property owners, that everybody understands what the land use laws are, what the regulations are, and how they're all needing to work together for the betterment of everybody. And they can also, the attorneys can serve as negotiation liaisons between property owners and any local or state officials. So, um, oftentimes you'll see that happen when there's something like, um, encroachment that's needing to happen. Um, and, you know, there's some property needing to be taken for a state road or something of that nature. And so, they'll, they'll work as, as negotiation li, negotiation liaisons between the private property owner and typically DUDOT or a local agency as they're going through that process. And then mediation, of course, of items like eminent domain, which is the one that I just mentioned, um, is the most common. And then anytime there's a land use dispute, so instead of just simply filing lawsuits against each other, it can be a lot more timely and a lot more cost-effective for everybody to come to the table and have discussions and see, is there a middle ground here that we can find? And naturally what mediation focuses on, so, um, our, our office does a lot of that. And then they have a very unique item that are referred to as advisory opinions. And anybody can request an advisory opinion, um, from, from the office. And it's if there's any type of issue that is happening, you can hand over to the attorneys all of the facts of the case, whether it's a, you know, certain application that's happening at the local land use level or something of that nature, all the facts, the application, the facts of the properties. Um, and then they will go through and do very extensive research on all of the state laws that are applicable, any type of precedent setting and any legal cases that could apply to that. And then they will come up with this advisory opinion, they'll hand it back to the parties. And what that is, is it's saying if this item were to go before a land use judge, this is likely the way that this judge would find based upon the legal criteria, what the state law says and, and what precedent is um, for, for the laws that are currently in place and for the cases that, that are currently in place. The reason why that matters is because that can then help people really come to discussions, mediation, um, and hopefully be able to get to a point without having to go through the very expensive and the very time-exhaustive legal process of, of having to go through, you know, lawsuits. Um, and so it, it can just help people in their negotiations together to, to understand what would a court likely find? And then it would help them be able to have more of those discussions in, in a much more cost-effective and a much more time-effective manner. Okay, um, before we jump into it, I want to make sure that everybody knows about this great resource that the state has. It is referred to as the Land Use Academy of Utah, um, commonly referred to as LOUAW because you'll learn that in the planning world, we love our acronyms, you gotta put an acronym on absolutely everything, right? So, um, luau.utah.gov, that's the QR code right there if you want to go to the website. And this serves as the central repository for all of your land use training and resources throughout the state of Utah. So, great collection of guidebooks, templates, examples, publications, um, contact information, videos, presentations, you name it. If it has to do with planning, you're gonna be able to find something related to the type of questions or, or background or research that you might have. Everything from technical all the way down to the really one-on-one level basic type of items. So if you ever have questions about land use, it's an excellent resource to go to. This is what the homepage looks like, so if you, uh, if you go to that homepage and you see a picture of Springdale, you know you're in the right place. And, um, yeah, great, great resource there and growing every single day. I don't think a, a single day has gone by since I've been with the state that we haven't put at least one more additional resource every single day on that website. So, growing all the time. Okay, so let's talk about some of the planning basics. The Planning Commission, I saw this, um, a couple of months back, and I about fell out of my chair laughing because as a longtime local agency planner, this is the number one thing that you would deal with on, on a regular basis. In fact, just last night I was scrolling through TikTok and there was someone talking about their frustration with being told that they couldn't do something on their property, that they couldn't build a second home on a very large property that, uh, that they had. Um, and this is the reality of, of, of what we deal with all the time. Um, now, why does that matter? It matters because the, the public is what makes up, of course, our communities. The reason why we have rules and regulations and everything in place is so that we can maintain what that community is, grow it in ways that you wanna see it grow, protect the things that you want to make sure are protected. But there can then constantly be that rub between those individual private property rights. And you wanna make sure that you're always explaining to people what their private property rights are, what the responsibilities that everybody has, the local agency has, the planning commission has, city or the town council has, and then as individual private property owners. And the best way to do that, of course, is through communication, transparency, and, and to ensure that they know. But typically when someone walks in the door and, and they're going to learn about things like zoning and a general plan and if they, they don't understand what those items are already, it can be really, really frustrating. And so hopefully, a lot of the items we're gonna talk about tonight are gonna place focus on understanding what those core fundamentals are and then being able to explain them to members of the public when you are, um, having communications with them, in particular about applications that are going to apply directly to them. Okay, so to get started, you have the Land Use Development and Management Act, again, back to an acronym, commonly referred to as LUGMA in the state of, of Utah. LUGMA sets the foundation for all land use law within the state of Utah. It's also what gives local agencies the authority to be able to have their local laws and regulations in regards to land use in place. Your general plan, your zoning, all of those items, the foundation of that sits in the State Land Use Development and Management Act. Um, I won't go through each one of the items here that touch on the purposes of LUGMA, but I do like to touch on the top three because I think especially as planning commissioners, if you consistently think to yourself the purposes of why land use regulations are in place and the focus that needs to be on them, these top three right here always helped me maintain the understanding of why and ensure that I was working really hard to communicate with the public. So, first and foremost is to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of, of your community. That's the whole reason why any type of land use regulation is in place. It's then to promote the prosperity of your community. Sometimes that means to stay true to what you have in place, right, protect the things that are already there. Sometimes it means to work toward, um, increased prosperity, right? And areas that you're interested in going, if you're growing, where are we growing? Um, you know, in what ways are we growing, how can we make sure that that's happening in, in the matters in which we want it to? And then overall, really just to improve the morale, the pace, the good order, comfort, convenience, and aesthetics of each municipality and each municipality's present and future inhabitants and their businesses, right? And that's really what the key to planning is, is to make sure that you know what you have and you know where you wanna go and you're setting that vision and then the rules and the regulations to be able to guide yourself to get there. That is where the general plan is going to come into play. Um, so the, the city here has, um, uh, recently adopted the, the general plan update. Uh, many communities have general plans that sometimes are ten, fifteen years old, um, be, before they've been updated. But yours, yours has been updated here fairly recently, which is a great thing. Uh, but the general plan is a mandated document, so if you are an incorporated city, you have to have a general plan in place. And it guides the growth and the development of your community. Really look at your general plan as it's the vision for what you want to see because it's gonna set that vision and then you're gonna use that vision to then talk about what policies need to be put in place in order for us to achieve that vision. Uh, it should consider today, but it should also look out into the future. Your general plan is really focused more on the future, understanding what you have today, but focused on the future. Typically, you're gonna have a ten to a twenty-year horizon within, within your, your general plan. Um, you can have less, you can have a little bit more, but ten to twenty years seems to be very realistic for the majority of communities within Utah. And it is intended to be a living document. That means that as the needs, the changes, and needs and desires of your community change and ebb and flow, um, that's okay. Uh, just because the general plan may have said that you were interested in growth in a certain area or interested in a certain type of growth, if you find that the community is shifting in different ways or they're having different desires, that document is intended to go through regular update processes. And you wanna make sure that it's always representative of what the community at large is really wanting to see and what you guys as elected and appointed officials know that your community is trying to work toward. Then you have your land use ordinances, and so your land use ordinances, of course, are going to be the written laws that have been duly adopted by the local legislative authority, uh, the city or the town council. And those are gonna then regulate the land development within your community. So, these are going to include items like your planning, your zoning, your development, your subdivision ordinances. This is where you're gonna get line by line into those actual policies that talk about, this is how items develop in this area. Lot coverage, setback, height restrictions, all of those type of items are gonna be included within your land use ordinances. And of course, the best practice there is that you want your ordinances to implement your general plan. The reason why you went through the general plan process was to set that vision. And so, now you're gonna drill down a little bit deeper and start getting into the specifics within your land use ordinances. But overall, you want that to always point back to your general plan and make sure that you're, that you're implementing what the general plan said. One of the more specific items that people hear, of course, a lot more about is zoning. Zoning is the local regulations that are going to manage the look and the feel of your community. Uh, they're going to control items like your land use, your density, and your physical dimensions of development within your community. And the intent there is to avoid conflicts between certain land uses for the protection and for the betterment of your community. So the history of zoning happened during the industrial age when all of a sudden you started having people living in areas where there was also heavy industrial activities that were taking place as well. So you can imagine the noise, the pollution, the sickness, any of those type of items that you have uses that aren't compatible with each other. If they're overlapping on each other, that's where the history of, of zoning really came in and separating out those type of uses. And so, now, of course, we see more of those separations, be residential and business districts and, and, and things of that nature. But the history of that really focused more on health. And then, of course, best practice, just like your land use ordinances in general should, should really be based upon your, your general plan. You wanna make sure that your zoning does that same thing. So if you have items within your zoning code that are at conflict with what your general plan was saying you're trying to work toward, then you would want to consider looking into some zoning amendments, some land use ordinance amendments to be able to bring those items back, uh, in line with each other. Okay, so what are the roles and the responsibilities of the various, um, groups that we have within our local agencies? So, you have your city or your town council, and this serves as the legislative decision-making body for your community. Um, they will make decisions such as the adoption of the general plan, any amendment to the general plan. They will adopt the land use ordinances, regulations, and design standards, that's both. They've adopted anything that's in place and then anything that was going to be amended, added to. Um, those items also go through the legislative body as well. Uh, zoning, of course, same thing, anything that is being proposed is going to be considered by them. Um, and annexation decisions, changes of your municipal boundaries, that could be, um, increasing is typically the one that you see more with annexations, but that could also even be pulling back on areas as well. Um, so it's just any change to your municipal boundary could be considered an annexation decision. And then, of course, any type of adoption of a fee, uh, that's going to be charged to the public needs to go through the legislative process as well and needs to be duly adopted by the city or the town council. Then you have your planning commission, planning commissions are absolutely pivotal for land use within your communities. Uh, they are required, every, every city is required to have a planning commission in the state of Utah. But they serve primarily in an advisory role, and that means that the commission is gonna review items and then make recommendations to the legislative body. Um, so you'll note that the items there, the general plan amendments, land use regulations, those are very consistent. We've said that those items, of course, are going to be adopted by the city or the town council, but they're going to be reviewed and a recommendation on what action to take by the planning commission first. Um, and we're going to, when we get into some discussions about the difference between legislative and administrative, we're gonna talk about the very important difference in roles there and how they, how they play into each other. And oftentimes, that's where, um, the, the role and responsibility of the city and the town council versus a planning commission really starts to make a lot more sense. Um, also, planning commissions can review and even approve certain applications to address consistency with adopted, um, land use regulations that have, that where the rules have already been set by the legislative body. Uh, and the city or the town council does, of course, have the authority to give the planning commission authority to actually be the decision-making body for certain, uh, for certain actions. Uh, one of those items is referred to as a land use authority. Uh, so a land use authority is a person aboard a commission, an agency, or a body that can include the local legislative body, so the city or the town council, that is designated by that local legislative body to act upon a land use application. Or if that local legislative body has not designated a person aboard, commission, agency, or body, then it diverts right back to the city or the town council, to that local legislative body. Um, so oftentimes you will see as an example there, uh, the local land use authority will be designated the planning commission for conditional use permits, right? So someone will come in, they'll have a conditional use permit, they'll go through the process there with the planning commission, and the planning commission may be the land use authority because they've been given that authority by their city or town council, and they will take the action on whether or not a conditional use permit is going to be approved or denied. Um, just as an example, that's, it can be different for every community because it always depends on who the designated land use authority is. If there hasn't been a designation of a land use authority given, then by default it goes back to the city and the town council. And I would note now in the last couple of years, uh, they have created the administrative land use authority, and that has to do with the new subdivision regulations for single-family and two-family homes. Um, so when you hear land use authority, that might be or might not be the same as the administrative land use authority. And but we will touch on that a little bit later as well. Okay, so legislative versus administrative decision-making, I believe that this is the most critical item for members of the city or town council and for a planning commission to understand and be really comfortable with. So legislative decisions are generally going to invoke making laws of general applicability, and they're gonna be based upon weighing broad and competing policy considerations and input from, from the community, from the general public. Typically, those legislative decisions, you're, you'll note that those are gonna line up with the ones that were on a couple of slides ago. Adoption amendment of the general plan, enactment and amendment of your land use ordinances, enactment of your zone map, and approval of any change of zone that might happen, annexation decisions, things of that nature. Considerations that need to be make, uh, that need to be made when legislative decisions are being considered is that local legislative decisions can't violate any state or federal law, right? So that's always gonna be the foundation of any type of legislative action is that it has to be in line with state and federal law. Uh, and then, you wanna take a look at if something is reasonably debatable, and that's a term that you're gonna see a lot, especially in the planning world. Uh, reasonably debatable, that the decision could advance the general wel, welfare or public interest and is consistent with, uh, the Land Use Development Management Act. And if it could be found reasonably debatable, then what you're typically going to see in the state of Utah is that a court is likely going to uphold that decision as legal. Um, that sounds like a lot of legal, you know, gobbledygook there, but the most important thing to point out there is that the local agency is given a lot of deference from the state to make local. state to make local decisions. And then that reasonably debatable concept really comes back to the local agency, right? They want the local agencies to be able to have the authority and the power to act in their own name for their own communities to the largest degree possible. And then, is it reasonably debatable that the action that you were looking to take was going to advance the public interest, the general welfare? Was it consistent with the Land Use Development Management Act? And if you find that those items were, then typically, a court is going to side with the local agency because they have been given that deference and that authority. And it's extremely important for a local legislative body to try to strike an appropriate balance between the public interest and the private property rights. As I said, Utah is a very strong private property rights state, so it's extremely important when you're having those discussions that you try to strike that appropriate balance. And this applies, of course, to a city or to a town council because it's not uncommon for those items to not align, right? For there to be a rub between the two at times. So try to strike that balance the best that you can. And then what are the considerations that you need to make as far as the role of the public when you're looking at legislative? And this is the biggest difference between legislative decisions and administrative decisions is the role of the public. And I would argue in my twenty years as a planner, probably the most misunderstood area by the public at large and where a lot of the frustration when they're standing before you as a planning commission can come in as opposed to when they're standing in front of a city or a town council because the roles and the responsibilities are very different. On the legislative side, the legislative body should take into consideration all input from the public. Property owners, other interested parties, people from in-town, people from out-of-town, anyone who's attending the meeting and has interest in what is being discussed, they absolutely should be given the opportunity, and the council can take all of that into consideration. And that does include just their opinions, right? I don't like this. Those type of items, when you're having legislative discussions, absolutely can be taken into account. But it is up to the legislative body to determine how much weight they want to give to any of those preferences or any of the opinions that are being offered. The local legislative body should certainly also receive input from the public for purposes of trying to gather facts, right? So opinions can absolutely matter and should matter when you're going through legislative items, but facts are always going to be the most important thing. And that's certainly what they should try to focus on, and that is for more support for any of the conclusions that they're then going to make as that legislative body. So on the flip side, what about the administrative decision-making? Administrative decisions are generally going to invoke applying your existing laws, your existing codes, your standards, your regulations to a particular development proposal, and they're then going to be based on the individual facts and circumstances of what that project, that application before you is going to be. Typically, the administrative decisions that you'll see, this one's new in the last couple of years, subdivisions for single-family, two-family, and townhomes. Conditional use permits are most common, a site plan, a building permit, a variance. The reason why this is so important and so different is because the rules have now already been set by the local legislative body, and that's the lens that you then use to take administrative action and make administrative decisions on items. You're only comparing the item in front of you to the rules that are in place and saying, is this in line with the rules? Does it meet the criteria? So this is where opinion is no longer a factor in any way and should not be a factor when you're talking administrative decisions. It's simply comparing against the rules that are in place. What are some of the considerations that you want to take into account when you're looking at that? Just like legislative, got to make sure that you're not violating any type of state or federal law. And the land use authorities should do the best that they can to apply plain language for land use regulations, which can be challenging when you're looking at a lot of the codes and standards and regulations that are in your land use ordinances, your zoning, right? It can get into a lot of the technical planning type of terms. Do the best that you can to try to put those explanations and everything into plain language when you're having especially communication in your open and public meetings. If an application that you're looking at meets the requirements, then it should be approved in a timely manner. There's no reason to put delays onto items if an application comes forward and it meets the criteria that you have set in place. Where a regulation does not plainly restrict a land use application or an item that's being requested in a land use application, or someone could reasonably read that to support different interpretations, the land use authority at that time should interpret and apply the regulation to favor the proposal in favor of the land use applicant. That goes back to Utah being such a heavy private property rights state. So if there isn't something, there isn't language within your code that prohibits something and someone is asking for something, it's better to err on the side of allowing that type of use out of respect for private property rights. Now, of course, that doesn't mean that if somebody were to come in with something that was going to have significant impacts to neighbors, the surrounding neighborhood, their safety concerns, issues of that nature, that certainly doesn't mean, well, it doesn't list that they can't do this item here, even though it would have all of these impacts. You should still be looking at what those impacts are and having discussions there. This is going to be more on the items if there's something that's a little nebulous and it doesn't list something else specifically as not being permitted. It's better to err on the side of allowing that use. And most importantly, the land use authority must always support their decision with substantial evidence. So evidence is always going to end up being the key. If someone either has something that is approved and someone appeals the approval, or they have something that is denied and they appeal that denial, the appeal authority is going to want to see the evidence. They're going to want to, of course, listen to the tapes of the meeting, they're going to want to see the application, but they're, most importantly, they're going to want to take a look at what was the data and what was the evidence that was presented? And did the planning commission and/or city or town council take the appropriate actions with that substantial evidence in place? So it's always extremely important to try to have as much data and evidence behind the decisions that you make as possible because even when you have a third party come in that was not a part of any of those discussions, you want the evidence to be able to support very clearly why you took the action that you chose to take as that land use authority. Okay, again, biggest difference, I think, and largest area of frustration and often misunderstanding is the role of the public when you're talking about administrative decisions. The land use authority cannot rely on public opinion or preferences when you're talking about an administrative decision because all you're doing is taking those rules and applying the rules to the application they put in place. So even if it's, I don't like this development, I don't like this type of use, I don't like, those are all opinion-based, right? If the rules says that they can do certain things and you're comparing that application to those rules, then it should be approved. Same thing, if you're looking at an application and it clearly does not meet the criteria, it violates the rules and the regulations that are in place, then it should also be denied. But opinion needs to be checked at the door, and oftentimes, that can be the most frustrating part for members of the public because they're going to come to a meeting of the planning commission and nine times out of ten, they're going to be offer something that is opinion-based or something that they have concern with, but that unfortunately is based upon opinion. And at that point, the planning commission can't take their opinion into account. That's only on the legislative actions. On the administrative side, you can't utilize opinion to turn something down. You just have to compare it to the rules in place. You can, however, receive input from the public for the purposes of gathering facts and evidence that are then going to support a decision that is being made, whether that's an approval or a denial. So this was an area where I always tried to make sure that the public understood that while opinions are real and they're valid and everybody, of course, has them, that the planning commission cannot utilize any type of opinion-based item to sway their decision in any way, but facts and evidence are the things that they absolutely need to be able to support an application. So I would always encourage members of the public that were there to be prepared to speak about any of those data, facts, things of that nature that then could be compared directly against the rules. Okay, so the administrative land use authority, which we had touched on a little bit before, is a newer thing within the state of Utah. That came along when they changed the subdivision, the state subdivision ordinances that now made single-family, two-family, and townhome subdivisions an administrative approval action as opposed to it going through a full legislative process. So an administrative land use authority is an individual aboard or commission that is appointed or employed by a municipality, including municipal staff or a municipal planning commission, and it does not include any member of the legislative body. So it can't be the full city or the town council, but it also can't include anyone from the city or the town council. And the reason why is because there was that separation now that needs to be between the legislative, people that take legislative action, and those that are responsible for administrative actions. Some of the changes that you saw with SB 174, which was the law that moved all these items over, is first, you can have a pre-application meeting that can be requested by the applicant. If that is requested, then it needs to be scheduled within fifteen business days of the request coming in. That doesn't have to be, but they have an option to have a pre-application meeting if they would like one. Initial review of the preliminary plat must be completed within fifteen days of receiving a complete application. If the municipality has a population of more than five thousand people, it goes to thirty days if your population is under five thousand people. One of the things I always like to point out here in this bullet point is the notation of a complete application. So what is a complete application? That is when all of the requirements of an application have been submitted. So every bit of criteria that's required within an application and any applicable fees have been paid. So it's not a partially complete application, it's not an application handed in without a fee being paid, any application fees being paid. It has to be full, everything asked for within that application and the fee being paid. That's then deemed a complete application, and the clock on all these items will start. A review of the final plat must be completed within twenty days of receiving a complete application. If the municipality has that population of five thousand or more, it's forty days if it's under five thousand. And there's now a maximum of four review cycles that are permitted. And what that means is they hand in that application, staff, if it's deemed complete and the fees have been paid, that starts that first review cycle. So they'll go through the first review cycle, the days that are listed right through here, and then they have to give their responses back to the applicant. So the local municipality has the requirement to hand those back to the applicant within X amount of time, but that cycle is not considered over until the applicant responds to every item that staff had noted, whatever comments were made, even if that means they're going to respond with noted, or I disagree with this change, or something of that nature, until the applicant comes back with that item, you're still in that same round. The requirement to have initial reviews done, that, of course, is on the municipality. As soon as that's handed over to the applicant, though, there is no required time in which they have to turn it back around to you, but it doesn't complete the cycle that you're currently in until they do hand that back to the municipality. And as I'd stated, every single item has to be acknowledged by the applicant, otherwise it just stays within that same cycle until they have responded to everything within that cycle. And there can only be a maximum of four of those cycles that go back and forth. If you get through all four of those cycles and there is still issues within the application, then it is appropriate to deny an application at that time. If there's something that the developer is not addressing or is not changing that is required by your local land use regulations, denial is completely appropriate. I think a lot of people were really concerned when they saw four review cycles, that if somebody can just drag it out through four, then they'll be able to get what they want in the end, and that's certainly not the case at all. What they're trying to do is put as much efficiency and timing on everything as they can so that items will continue to work their way through the process while still ensuring that the local agency has the ability to review and approve and/or deny items as appropriate within, compared to their code, the rules and regulations that they have in place. And then to also make sure that the applicant is going to put in their due diligence into understanding what the rules and the regulations are so that they are doing items like complete application and going through the appropriate type of responses to be in line with the local rules and regulations. Anytime that an applicant is going to disagree with something, it needs to be in writing. As I said, those review cycles, what we're telling applicants is every single response that you get, put everything in writing, right? That ends up ensuring that the city is in a better place for their decisions, and it also makes sure that the applicant has all of that on record as well, right? So all of that proof from that data and the substantial evidence, that really goes on to both sides. So everybody wants to make sure that they have that. As I've stated, the subsequent review cycle cannot begin until all comments have been addressed by the applicant. If an application is not approved following all review cycles, then the agency should notice the applicant writing of the continued deficiencies, and they do have the right to appeal that determination. The local agency, of course, has the right to deny if they've gone through all of those and they're still not in line with it. So the process timeline for most larger cities and counties, the new process has had to be implemented by February first of 2024. All other cities and counties had to have it implemented by the end of the calendar year last year, December thirty-one, 2024. So everybody in the state needs to have those items in place at this time. Okay, that really takes us through the planning basics and most important things to understand. I will then typically go through several slides here that are just going to talk about some of the more hot topic issues or most common questions that we get from local agencies. But at any time, if you guys have questions about anything that we've already talked about or anything that's, you know, that we're touching on here, please jump in. That goes for the audience as well. So any questions, concerns?
If someone, if a resident or anybody engages the office of property rights ombudsman, is there a cost involved there?
There is. So the, I mean, there's no cost to just reach out to the ombudsman and say, hey, I have some questions, can you help me with this? We're dealing with this application right now, we're property owners saying, hey, we're trying to do this, and this is what we're being told. There's no cost for any of those type of discussions. The only thing that has a cost is the advisory opinion, and it's only a hundred and fifty dollars. Everything else is absolutely complimentary, no cost. Any other questions? Okay, so annexation. Are you guys done with any type of annexation, potential annexation, anything of that nature right now?
Not right.
Okay. Anything you want to talk about about annexation to understand a little bit more about how it works? I will say that there is a bill proposed right now, just in the last several days, going through the legislature, that would actually change some of the annexation process, add some better definitions. It used to be that Salt Lake County had its own annexation track, and then everybody else in the state had other criteria. It actually brings everybody in to consistent and streamline some of those items. So even a lot of the conversation that we would have here might very well be changing here in the next couple of months, but everything appears that those changes are better and friendlier. So requiring, kind of paring down, I think, some language that over time, I really refer to it as kind of got Frankenstein in all honesty over the years as the state grew and grew and grew, but I think we'll see some pretty good changes there. If you guys are starting to have any discussions about annexation or anything of that nature, an annexation policy plan is a required document, so that would be one of the very first things that you're going to make sure that you ask staff about. What does our annexation policy plan look like? That's something that you would want to be able to refer to and understand as a planning commission because you're then be reviewing items and making recommendations to the city or the town council on those items. So that does not appear that that will change in any way. In fact, it looks like it's actually going to become an even more important document. How about conditional use permits? Are CPs items that you guys hear much of at the planning commission level?
Yes.
Okay. Are you seeing conditional use permits staying pretty much the same as far as how often they are, becoming more of a conversation, or maybe even your agency being interested in moving away from having as many conditional uses?
Pretty consistent. They usually get, as far as the planning question level, we usually get like one to three oversized building-type conditional use permits a month.
Okay.
You know, stuff like that seems pretty consistent. Every once a while, something a little different.
Yeah, something a little unique.
Between one to three a month, I've seen on their agenda for a long time, you know?
Okay.
Pretty consistent.
So conditional use permits, of course, are great tools to be able to have, especially if you know that there are certain uses that can have some specific areas that are going to need to be addressed and mitigated, right? It's, I would say typically, there are going to be things that are associated with maybe noise or light or something of that nature, and you want to make sure that light is going to have appropriate hooding on it, and you want to make sure that noise is going to be mitigated, there's going to be certain type of buffer zones, things of that nature. So conditional use permits, while they're really, really good, I have to admit that I have seen communities that have started to move away from conditional use permits being as common within their communities. And what I mean by that is if there's certain conditional uses that they're seeing that are being requested on a fairly regular basis, they're choosing to push those items as administrative as much as they can, meaning get great rules and regulations in place and then allow staff to be able to do the review on those items. So some of the examples that I had said, such as noise and lighting, if you have language that really ensures that an applicant is going to understand if you have language that really ensures that an applicant is going to understand that your light cannot pour over onto an adjacent property by more than X percentage, then they're going to know as they're putting their item together, we have to deal with hooding on this and we have to be able to show as part of our application how lighting, hooding is going to be able to be used to ensure that light isn't spilling over onto an adjacent property more than, you know, one or two feet or something of that nature. Noise can be same type of things, you can say that you can't exceed a certain decibel level and those decibel levels can even change depending on the time of day. You can put those items into rules and then allow those things to be administratively overseen as opposed to needing to have public hearings for them every time. So that's, that's an area that I think is, is good for agencies to take a look at. If there's certain conditional uses that you're just seeing pop up on a really regular basis, that means that the agency knows the type of rules and regulations that are important and the things that they want to see in place, those mitigating factors that they need to make sure are being addressed. You can put those into your code right away and then not have to go through as much of that, you know, public meeting process. Because CUPs can oftentimes, again, bring in some of the concern and, and frustration that you get from members of the public. And oftentimes they're coming in to express just simply an opinion on something that, that they're, that they maybe not like. And the most appropriate thing for the members of the public at that time is to ensure that they're having good communication with the local legislators because if there's items that are permitted or allowed within your city code and it's those actual uses that people have concerns with, then that should be going through an administrative, or excuse me, a legislative type of process to make sure that those are things that overall are going to be more addressed within the community as opposed to one by one, which can really make every single application feel very, very political. And oftentimes can blur that line between legislative and administrative. And that, that can be really confusing and frustrating for the public rightly, so. Any questions on any of that? Okay. I, you'll notice that I, I use the term detrimental effects or mitigations, right? Detrimental effects of course are going to be anything that comes along with a proposed project that is then going to have any type of negative impact on, on the area, on the community overall. Those are your detrimental effects. Mitigation measures are going to be things that you can put into place to try to counterbalance as much of that as possible. Sometimes you can actually eliminate some of those items. Oftentimes you can mitigate them to a certain degree where the impact is going to be low enough that it is deemed to be acceptable. Items like that can be impacts to your street service levels or to your traffic patterns, right? The more community development that you have going on, the more cars and the more movement of, of people and vehicles you're going to have within your community. So certainly you can do things to, to, to address the impacts that's that, that that's going to have there. But there's really no way to just say, if we're adding five thousand in population, you know, you can't just say, but we don't want any of them to have cars, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's not realistic, but there is mitigation measures of course that you can try to look into that are going to try to help with that as much as possible. Same type of things, impacts on the adequacy of your utility systems and the delivery for that, your connectivity, your pedestrian bicycle movements and the safety associated with those items and, and on and on there. So the reason why I had said some communities are moving away from having as many conditional use permits and really trying to say, are there ones that we're seeing a lot? They then try to go in and take all of these items right here and have good rules and regulations in place that can allow an applicant to come in with an application that already addresses these items. And then administratively you can compare those, those items and, and discuss whether or not there needs to be adjustments or changes within that application for, for the applicant to move forward. Okay, exactions. An exaction is a mandatory contribution that is being required by any governmental entity as a condition of approval for their development. Typically, you're going to see those be items like dedication of property, you know, for roads, for sidewalks, items of that nature, construction and dedication of public improvements, right? So if you have somebody come in and they get an approval for a subdivision, they have all the services on the interior of that subdivision that are going to be required to serve whatever homes or businesses are going to be there. So while they are responsible to build and to place those items to the appropriate spec, all of those items are then going to be dedicated over to the local agency or to the special district in, in certain instances. And it's then their responsibility to have the maintenance and the operation of that, right, in perpetuity. But it is an exaction if the construction and dedication of any of those public improvements is required for that because they're having to put some dollars into items and then hand them over, which could be looked at the same as a fee or by law is looked at the same as a fee. And then any type of monetary payments and that does include anything like your development impact fees. So any of those items are also considered to be exactions or required payment that is coming from anyone looking to develop a property in exchange for being able to develop that property. There's something very important within exactions that's referred to as the rough proportionality test. And that says that a municipality can impose an exaction on a development proposed in a land use application if it meets two specific criteria. First, there's an essential link between the legitimate government interest and each exaction. So the reason why the pictures here were utilized, the one on the bottom you can see, obviously that is going to be public utilities, right? So if someone is going to build an item, then they need to have sewer, they need to have water, they need to have electric, right? So that would be the link there between the government interest and any type of exaction that is being required. And then you have to make sure that any exaction is roughly proportionate, both in its nature and its extent to the impact of the proposed development. And this can be one where oftentimes communities will accidentally get a little bit sideways, especially in, in communities that are growing. What I mean by that is if someone were to come into the subdivision application and it was for X amount of homes and the engineering report shows that they need a four inch water line to serve those homes, the local agency can't say, well, you know what? You guys building here and we know someone else is interested in building down the road here. We think that someone else is going to build down the road there. You guys need to put in a ten inch water line right now because in the future, we know that that, that demand is going to be there. You can't require that developer to place something that is larger than what's required to serve just their individual project. You can of course have discussions with that developer about looking into reimbursement agreements and having them place some of these larger items or even the city pay to upsize some of those items and, and giving them certain credits to be able to get a larger line or larger infrastructure put in place upfront. But it cannot be a requirement as, as a condition of their approval. They can only be required to put in items that meet the impact of their individual proposal, of their proposed development. Any questions on that? And some of the tools when you're thinking about it, most importantly, they really break down into two type of improvements. You have system improvements and then you have a project improvement. So the reason why I use the picture here is because the interior of this subdivision, all of these items, all of the public infrastructure that's going to be put in place, streets, the sidewalks, any of the underground utilities, any of those items would not be needed if that project were not being proposed, approved and built, right? So you can look at those items and understand those are generally going to be a project improvement, something that would not be required minus that project. A system improvement is generally understood to be a public facility that's intended to provide services for the larger community overall. So when you have a subdivision like this, while the interior of those items are typically going to be your project improvements, there is some areas that are adjacent to, just on the outside or even bordering on that project, that could absolutely be pointed to as system improvements. And that might be a major arterial road, right, a widening of a road, something of that nature. The, the best thing to do is to take a look at your capital facilities plan that every local agency is required to have. If an improvement is indicated within that capital facilities plan, then you should really look at that as that is a system improvement and should not be determined to be a project improvement. That doesn't mean that aspects of a project coming before you can't apply to system improvements and, and system upgrades. But you always want to go back to that rough proportionality and make sure that any, this proportional with what their, their development is, is proposing their, their fair share of that system improvement. But you always want to make sure that you are mindful of items between system improvement and project improvement. Okay, variances. Do you guys deal with variances very often?
Every once in a while.
Okay. I, I would say aside from the, the role that, that the public plays at the planning commission, administrative versus legislative and city town, city or town council, variances are probably the most misunderstood planning item that is out there in, in my experience. And that's because typically when someone comes in and they ask to do something and they're told this doesn't meet regulation, items such as if someone comes in and say, I have five acres of property, I have my existing single family home on it, I'm going to build another single family home on that property. And your code says that you cannot do that, that you, you can only have one unit per X amount of acres, right? Which is very common in, in, in growing or, or areas that were rural in nature in the past. When someone is told that they can't do something, ninety percent of the time, the next thing out of their mouth is going to be, okay, well, I want a variance, right? And that's because in their mind, what they're thinking is I want an exception to that rule. But a variance is not an exception to an item. And well, while, while it is in, in general, variances themselves are extremely, should be very, very rare. And there's certain items that you want to make sure are met before you are approving a variance for someone. So if you're looking at them, you want to look at these three items right here when you're considering whether or not a variance is, is appropriate. First, would literal enforcement of the ordinance cause unreasonable hardship for the applicant that is not necessary to carry out the general purpose of the land use ordinances? Again, a lot of planning speak right there, but what that means is if literal enforcement, if you say this is exactly what you can and cannot do, is that going to rob them of a property right that is not critical to ensuring that your land use ordinances are consistent and fair throughout the community? The reason why I utilized this picture right here was because this is actually a development in the eastern Sierras that had a couple hundred lots total. But there was about five lots that had a lot of these rock and outrock, outproppies right here. And what that did was it really limited the amount of buildable area that people had on, on their lots. Truthfully, the lots probably shouldn't have been approved the way that they were. They shouldn't have been created as legal lots like that, but they were and they were of course owned by individuals. And so when they had come in and it was saying, you're too close to the setback here, well, they couldn't, there wasn't anywhere else that they could, there wasn't any other buildable area that was allowed on, on that lot without them having some type of need for a variance from that strict interpretation of the code, right? So number one is that. And then two, there's special circumstances that are attached to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone. Like I'd said, there was a couple hundred lots total in this area here and there was only a handful that had this type of issue. So there were special circumstances that certainly applied to just a handful of lots and were not applicable to everybody else. And then three, granting the variance is essential to the enjoyment of a substantial property right that others within that same zone district have, right? So looking at all of the other properties that were adjacent to this one and throughout the community that had that same zoning classification on it, they all were able to build single family homes, operate a certain way. They were able to have that substantial property right enjoyment, right? But the handful of these properties here with strict interpretation of the code would not have been able to have that. And because they met all three of those items right there, then a variance was very appropriate. But a variance should be granted to someone if it's just, well, I don't like that or I have, I have a project that goes outside of the scope of that. One of the most common is that a variance should also not ever be granted for just economic reasons alone. So if someone were to come in and say, well, this is either going to save me money or I'm not going to be able to make as much money on something if I'm not given a variance. It's, the agency needs to make sure that they're weighing those items very, very carefully. The reason why is because if you're giving, if you're giving variances out on a regular basis, with each one that doesn't meet this type of criteria here, you're actually invalidating your zoning code and the standards that are within it. And the agency is opening themselves up to a lot of potential liability for others that could come in and say, well, you know, property A over here received this. Did they meet this criteria? So why don't I get that, that same thing, right? So it can really cause a lot of problems for a local agency if they're not very specific on, on the item that they want to go in. Always want to make sure that even the incap of variance that you may be granting for approval is still in line with your general plan and the, the public interest at large, of course. And most importantly, that sphere of the land use ordinance needs to be observed and that substantial justice is still being acknowledged and, and done. That's what I'd said about the liability of potentially handing out variances that don't meet that specific criteria. And that's why they should actually be pretty rare. The hope is, is that as you're going through all of your items upfront, you're addressing everything to the point where you're not going to need variances. But it is a great tool to have, for instances where they are needing. Want to make sure that the items are peculiar to that, they also can't be something that was created by the property owner. So you notice in the picture again, the owner didn't come in and pile up any of these rocks the way that they were, right? It wasn't something that was created by the individual property owner. So the property owner were to come in and do anything to their property that then doesn't allow them to build within the standards, but it was because of actions that they took or it's the financial type of item, a variance should not be applicable at that time. Okay, that pretty much wraps it up. We just refer to this here as our Jeopardy board. These are a lot of items that we get, I would say the majority of questions on, people that reach out to our office and are looking for, you know, guidance or feedback on some of these topics here. So I put it up here, if there is anything that jumps off and you guys wanted to take a couple minutes to talk about it, I can absolutely do that. Also want to be very respectful of course of your meeting, I know that is, should be starting here about thirty seconds, is that alright? Yeah. So with that, any, any questions or, you know, even anything that I could maybe put together and, and send out to staff here that they could provide to you guys in the future so that I don't impede too much in the meeting?
Can we get a copy of the slide deck?
Absolutely.
Great.
Happy to provide that.
And if you could just adjust, so like with the change in how the single family to a home, that change, how does that move, I guess, does that move any power from the city council to the planning commission or vice versa? And how, from a property rights, how do you, how do you view that from a, from a perspective?
Yeah, really what that did was it shifted everything from being legislative discussions, policy based type of decisions to administrative, which meant that it took the opinion based items out of it. And it's, it, it requires communities now to have very good rules in place. So an applicant can read it, understand the rules and have that reviewed administratively. So cities and town councils now do not have a role in that process. And the reason why is because they're trying to go for as much efficiency and transparency and clarity as possible to get items through a process for the simple aspect of supply and demand, right? You know, I'm sure you guys have all read in, in the papers, we all know of course the housing affordability challenges that we have here. One of the largest ways that you can, that you can address affordability concerns is through supply and demand. And, you know, if you have a ton of demand for a little bit of supply, prices are always going to, to be a lot higher. If you can have more balance between what the supply is and what the demand is, then the market should be more competitive and you should see better pricing as a, as a result of that. So that was really the main draw behind that. And, and for local agencies to just have great rules in place so that applicants have a really good understanding of what the regulations and the requirements are and to try to remove as much of the one-off political type of items that could, that can go in and impact a lot of projects like that. Anything else? Okay, I'll get you guys a copy of the presentation and thank you very much for your time, appreciate that.
Well, we'd like to thank you for coming. We currently don't have a quorum present, so we're not going to be able to have our meeting tonight. I apologize as the weather outside was...
Recording in progress.
Not the best for you to come out, but if any of you had, since we're not having a meeting, if any of you had questions on what Rob presented, we'd be more than happy to let you ask those questions because we're not going to be able to address any of the issues or address any of the items on our agenda tonight because of the lack of a quorum, so.
What is the quorum?
A couple of members had...
A snowmobile or...
A couple of members had family emergencies that came up and personal issues, so they...
Had a seven? Was there seven? Good fun.
There's seven.
There's like sixty percent or something. That pretty good.
So yeah, without a quorum, of course, we can't do much.
Yeah.
Other than say, thanks for coming.
Last time I was here with an addendum, they went through it with three people.
That was when the planning commission had a five-member council and three members were a quorum, so that was...
So now you're seven, you've got, well, you've got to have four?
Yes, based on the ordinance that was passed.
Last week, the city council voted to have a seven-member commission instead of five. And so because there's a seven-member commission now, we have to have four to have a quorum.
Who decides who's on the council? Or who decides who's on the planning area?
Right now, the city council.